Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 15, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. And would there be any moments of silence that any other supervisor has? No? So I'll offer, with what we're presenting today, I'll offer a moment of silence for any and all soldiers that are deployed and to their families. It's a very hard time when you're deployed. I've been there. I know a lot of others have been there, whether they be family or, you know, or the person deployed. And so I would like to give this moment of silence to everybody in honor of that. Ginny, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to our item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Is there anything that needs to be added at this moment in time? Not seeing any. We will move on to item five, approval of the consent agenda. And consent agenda items are usually non-controversial. We like to pass them with one, or we don't like to, it's just they're passed with one vote. And so if there's any that need to be pulled for discussion, we will pull them off and discuss them at a later time. That's more according to, or more convenient for the agenda. And so are there any supervisors that would like to pull any? Supervisor Sabatier?
I'd like to pull, hello? I'd like to pull item 5.9.
5.9, okay. Are there any others? I'll open it up to public input. I'm not on Zoom as of now, so if someone can help me with that, if there's someone on Zoom that needs to pull some-
I see no hands, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda 5.1 through 5.8 and 5.10.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Johanna, can you conduct the roll call, please?
Okay. So Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll come back to item 5.9 at a later time. We will move on to our timed items in our six, well, let's see, are we there? No, actually, how long do you think 5.9 will take?
Not long at all.
Let's take it up. 5.9, approved bid award to easy badges in the amount of $5,560.91 for replacement ID card printer. Supervisor Sabatier?
So I apologize, I said not long at all, but I just checked. I thought I had seen Sheriff Martin on here. I do not, and maybe waiting for him to be online, but I did, basically, I'll go, since you started the item, there's a discrepancy in the amount on the invoice that we have. It's for 5,100 versus the 5,500 that is being asked for us to approve. I know that there was some communication that that could be the sales tax, but I wasn't provided any documentation to do so. So I think at this moment in time with nothing more to offer other than the idea that I don't think this needs to be approved by the Board of Supervisor for something of $5,000. So, but at the same time, I want to give the sheriff a chance to at least respond rather than just take it off with that expectation.
So maybe we'll wait and see if the sheriff will come at a later time.
Yes, I can contact him and Mary Beth in his office as well.
Okay. Well, we know where we're at with that, and so we'll put that back for a later time and move forward to our 6.1, which is our public input. Public input, if you want to come up or raise your hand in the Zoom room, of course, to discuss something that's not on the agenda, you have three minutes to do so. We also are not at liberty to discuss anything that's not on the agenda, so if you bring it up, we're not trying to be rude to you, we just have to hear you and decide and decipher how we're going to move forward with that agenda item, or not agenda item, but that discussion at a later time, or direct you to somebody that can take care of your issue. However, we do have a citizens' input request form from Mary Darby, our CDD director, and it looks like we have an introduction of a new chief building official, and I'll let you do the rest there.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and the Board of Supervisors and the rest of the board and citizens. I would like to say good morning, and I have the honor of introducing William Collins. He goes by Bill. He is our new chief building official. He will be in charge of permitting process, plan check, and the international building codes, and the zoning ordinance implementation, and I will allow him to introduce himself.
Hello, I'm Bill Collins. I was an ironworker for a lot of years, most of my career. A few years back, I decided to make a transition into building safety. I got some good opportunities, some good mentors helped me out a lot, brought me along. I'm certified as a combination building inspector, plans examiner, I also have a CASP certification, and of course, my certified building official cert. And I look forward to the opportunity of getting the building safety team together and expanding on what we already got going here and trying to make it the best building department we have.
All right, well, welcome aboard, Bill. Yeah, give you a round of applause. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Excellent. That's good news. I like doing, I like having those type of things right off the bat. Yeah. So let's go to our, well, any other public input? Let's see if I, I admit, might have missed something on. Nope, I don't see anything online. So we'll move on to our 6.2, or 906, presentation of proclamation commending Operation Tango Mike for 19 years of support for military personnel and their families. And this is sponsored by Supervisor Sabatier and myself, and I'll read the proclamation off. I'll read, I'll read it up here. And so just before I read it, I want to highlight how important this program is, and I know Thursday there's going to be a packing night and an hour before, we're going to celebrate, you know, the years and the amount of time and energy that this has been done for quite some time. I know as a soldier, when you're overseas and you're just in the mix of your missions, your obligations, your work, missing your family, hitting the ground running and not stopping, sometimes you get mail and you are just so happy, you don't care who it's from, you're so touched when you see that it's just from random people of acts of kindness. And Ginny, you doing this is, you know, keeping this going forward for a lot of soldiers and their morale. So I'm going to read this proclamation. And so this proclamation states, commending Operation Tango Mike for 19 years of support for military personnel and their families, whereas Operation Tango Mike has supported deployed military personnel throughout Operation Enduring Freedom, Operation Iraqi Freedom, Operation New Dawn, Operation Onward Liberty, Operation Inherent Resolve, and Operation Freedom Sentinel. And whereas Operation Tango Mike has shipped more than 24,000 care packages to deployed personnel and assisted multitudes of military families. And whereas Operation Tango Mike coordinates annual collection and distribution of Christmas gifts and school supplies for military families. And whereas Operation Tango Mike has coordinated and hosted many welcome home celebrations and ceremonies for returning troops. And whereas Operation Tango Mike has assisted in honoring three of Lake County's fallen heroes in global war on terror. And whereas the Secretary of Defense has recognized families and community members as the power behind the power. And whereas Operation Tango Mike fills a crucial role in supporting family members and loved ones of our armed forces and provides a compassionate community and incalculable moral support to families and loved ones. And whereas Operation Tango Mike will mark 19 years of unwavering support for military personnel and families on March 19, 2022. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby commend and express its gratitude to Operation Tango Mike for their continued commitment, dedication, and invaluable service to military personnel and their families, passed and adopted this 15th day of March, 2022. Sign, Board of Supervisors. If there's anything you would like to add to that?
Well, I'd just like to say that I believe this is a real testament to our community, the tenacity and the willingness to share and support other people, and to recognize that those that are taking care of us need our attention and our support. It's incumbent on us to support our troops because they're the ones that ensure our freedoms. So I think, like I said, it's a real testament to our community that the tenacity has lasted for 19 years, and we are currently supporting troops in Iraq and Afghanistan and 12 other countries, and our requests for support from areas in Europe are increasing, so please continue to support us. Thank you for the recognition.
And where would somebody find drop boxes? I believe there's some in our fire station in Clear Lake. I know there was one in our city hall. Where else would people be able to do that?
Currently, there are four locations to make physical donations, the fire department in Clear Lake, fire department in Kelseyville, Red and White Market in Clear Lake Oaks, and the lobby of Umpqua Bank in Lakeport. If somebody wants to make monetary donation, any branch at Umpqua Bank or at OperationTangomike.com or OperationTangomike.org.
And can you provide the exact time and location of Thursday night's packing party, please?
Sure. Our packing parties are always the third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM, Umpqua Bank, 805 11th Street, Lakeport, except every March, it's at 5:00 PM because we have an open house from 5:00 to 6:00. We invite the community to come, get acquainted, take a look at what we do, and meet some folks, and enjoy some wonderful food. Rosemary Martin of Rosie Cooks again is donating food for the event, so from 5:00 to 6:00. Come see her some fellowship and some food, get acquainted, and then at 6:00 o'clock, we'll pack boxes and support our troops.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can we get your phone? Can we get your-
What time up?
It's not working out so well.
All right. Is there, I'll open that up for public input if there's anyone-
I received an email, Ginny, over the weekend from a local service person with a really heartfelt story about how he felt when he received his packages overseas, and he just wanted me to know that, and so I wanted to pass on that gratitude to you. And then also discussions with our countywide Girl Scout Service Unit about how many packages we're going to be contributing at the cookie sales and the end of this month, and all surplus packages either go to Tango Mike or Elijah House. So that's something that all of our troops, they absorb the costs and then they do those donations. And I know you already know that, but I wanted to make sure everybody else knew that.
No, we appreciate that. And I told the Girl Scouts, if somebody starts to pass them by and says, I don't eat cookies or anything with sugar, I would say, tell them, don't give them treats, you can buy them and support Girl Scouts that donate to the troops.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, that's exactly right. I get a lot of those sales each year where people, or I'm out of cookies, and so people still want to donate, so I always pass that on. So thank you so much.
Does anyone else from the board have anything else to add? And I'm looking to see if there's any public input. There's none in the room. I'm looking for online attendees. No hands up. All right. Our next item, well, that's not till 9:30, so we will pick a different item. 7.4 is the one we're waiting until after 11:00.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you wanted to take up 7.2, the, I believe the HR Director Pam Samick is in the Zoom room.
Okay.
And could present that if you wish.
Let's do 7.2. 7.2 is consideration of amendment to the County of Lake COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Work Site Protocol. And this, I'll hand this over to CAO Hutchinson so she can hand it over to-
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our HR Director Pam Samick has prepared this agenda item for today. I see her name here in the Zoom. Pam, are you hearing me? Are you present?
Hello?
Hello?
I said 7.2. We're ready for it. Thank you. Okay, shall we hear it just a minute?
All right. All right.
Thank you, Pam.
Good morning, Board. Today, we wanted to present the updates to the COVID protocol, which essentially is just updating the masking and the current quarantining and isolation guidelines. In addition, we added an easy-to-follow table that outlines when you need to quarantine and when you need to isolate. And that is really the updates for the most part. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
There was one part that seems strange to me, and I'm guessing that most of this is verbatim coming from Cal OSHA and other resources that are providing direction for us, but on page eight of the protocol, it says, "The employee must submit a positive PCR test taken within 14 days of work exposure to receive workers' compensation benefits." That 14 days just seems, in my opinion, and again, if it comes directly from Cal OSHA, that's, it is what it is, but that seems like a very long time period, or continuously getting a positive test after the fact when 10 days later, you're able to come back to work. It just, that doesn't make sense, that you could still take a test after you're good to come back to work, but still could take a test that could get you workers' comp. Like, that's confusing to me.
This is the workers' comp requirement, and this information was provided to me by risk management. In order to qualify for workers' comp, they must have a positive PCR test. It can't just be the home test. So basically, if somebody tests positive with our rapid test, they must seek a PCR test to qualify for workers' comp. That's just explaining that process because a lot of our employees did not know that, so I included it in the protocol.
Right. Well, to me, I just wanted to at least express the confusion of the timelines where people can come back. We know it takes about two to three, maybe four days max now, that we're not in a surge to get our PCR test results and to be able to go back to work, test yourself afterwards, test positive, and then get workers' comp for a previous time that you took off. Just seems, seems strange to me, but it is what it is. It's coming from up above, so I'm ready and willing to move forward on that.
All right. Any other board comments? Not seeing any. I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the chambers have anything to add to that? Not seeing anybody, and then I see we have somebody online. Carlos Bono, if you can unmute, you have three minutes to add your public input.
I'd like to know, hi, this is Carlos Bono. I'd like to know why the PCR test is continuing to be used when the CDC revoked its emergency use authorization for the test as of December 31, 2021. Why is this test being continually, why are you still using this test in Lake County? And why hasn't another test been, you know, why haven't you started using another test? That's all I have for now, if you could please answer my question.
Thank you.
Can someone answer the question?
Yeah, someone is. I'm just waiting for you to, hold on a second. Pam, do you have an answer for that, or?
I don't have a direct answer for that, except for this is what is required by our insurance company to validate COVID and get workers' comp. And then this is, you know, what is the OSHA standard, so I haven't been instructed to discontinue the use of that. In addition, to seek the supplemental paid leave, the additional 40 hours, that's a requirement to get that leave. So, and that is what was just signed into regulation effective last month by the governor. So right now, that's what we're legally required to do, so we'll continue to use them as indicated.
Thank you, Pam, for explaining that and answering that. And Supervisor Sabatier?
And it's very simple to do a Google search and go to cdc.gov and find a question that says, "Does the retirement of this test apply to all PCR-based tests for SARS-CoV-2 tests?" And the answer is no, the discontinuation of emergency use authorization only applies to a very specific PCR diagnostic panel test. It does not affect any other SARS-CoV-2 tests that have received EUA from the FDA. So the remark is based on a very narrow topic of what has been discontinued, but there is still continued use of PCR tests. And I'm just going to go a little bit further because of the research that I've done. It's because there's new PCR tests that can simultaneously tell you if you have COVID or a cold or a flu, before it was just COVID or not. And now we have new tests that can look into more than just one illness in order to be able to differentiate between. The other one was not confused if you had the flu or the COVID, it just said yes or no for COVID, and that's it. So I think there's been a lot of misinformation or misunderstanding as to what this process has been, and it's due to the fact that there has been a lot of changes coming from CDC and part of the processes that we've had to follow. So I think it's just, it is confusing to keep track of everything that's happening, but it is available on the CDC website, and it does explain it very clearly.
Thank you for that. Seeing if there's any other public input online, and I'm not seeing any, so we'll bring it back to the board. And let me see what we have.
Oh, there is a public comment.
Oh, okay. If you'd like to come to the microphone. No, I don't think we're in the-
It's in the green.
Which one is it? I'm sorry.
It's in the green, I checked it.
Yeah, it's in the green, green tier, Joan. We're in the green tier. Okay. All right. And now we'll close public input, and we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the amendment to the County Lake COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Work Site Protocol.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Can you please conduct the roll call, Johanna?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Thank you.
There we go. All right.
And Mr. Chair, since you have a little more time before your next timed item, we could conceivably take up 7.3. Matthew was going to present that. Matthew, could you give a time estimate as to how long you think that would take?
Yes, Carol, thank you. I'm hopeful that it can take somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 15 minutes.
Okay, so it may take a little more time than you want to take.
Maybe even faster than that, though.
Your call, Mr. Chair.
Just depending on the board's input.
Yeah, let's, maybe we could take up calendars. That takes up five or 10 minutes at most, at best. So let's, let's start with calendars, and we will start with Supervisor Sabatier.
I'm not ready.
Sorry.
No, no, no worries. Two seconds. Didn't have my calendar quite open yet. Let's see, tomorrow's a pretty big day for our LAFCO meeting to discuss the annexation for Lakeport. We have our AVA meeting, and if that's done in time, I'll be able to make it to the Clear Lake Marketing Meeting, and then we have a roadmap task force meeting later on that day. We have a, start my morning off on Thursday with Judge's Breakfast, and I do have two conflicting meetings, one that I have to be at, and that's our special meeting that we have this Thursday, but I do need to reach out to the, and-
I think that was-
Was that canceled?
Yeah.
Oh, well, then I don't have conflicting meetings.
I'm like, because I don't have it on my calendar.
I don't know how it never got off my calendar. Good, that means I can go to the IFT meeting in the morning because I asked to make sure to be on that listing, and now I thought I wasn't going to make it, I kind of felt bad. And continuing on, I'm going to make it over to the Umpqua Bank on Thursday at 5:00 PM, but I will need to make it back to the Clear Lake City Council meeting just to make sure and keep track of everything that's happening over there. Friday, there's a Blue Zones Project Food Policy Summit happening, and then a meeting with our sheriff and our Community Development Director as well on Friday. Over the weekend, I am taking part in a fundraiser mystery dinner over in the city of Clear Lake at the Senior Center. It's a Irish mafia family drama, and I will not be trying to do an Irish accent because or else I would slaughter that. But that will start in the evening at 6:00 PM, and go to their website to look for tickets or look for Joyce Overton. She'll be able to hook you up with tickets as well. And then on the 21st, it looks like I'm just preparing for a meeting on the 22nd. I have nothing else so far on my list, and that's it for me.
All right. Supervisor Pisca?
Yeah, so I have a couple of things to report. The last couple of weeks have felt kind of pre-pandemic with all the driving I've been doing and meetings, so it's, it's interesting to be out and seeing people again. Yes, a couple of things to report, we did have the Tree Mortality Town Hall last Thursday. It was really well attended. We had about 75 people there present, and I've gotten a lot of great feedback on it. It is, it remains on our Facebook page. It was, it was on live, so if anybody wants to go back and look there, you can also look on our county YouTube channel to watch that. It's just an hour exactly, but we had some really fantastic presenters, including Mike Jones, who really went into the science behind all of the insect kill and the reason why our forests are, forests are sort of transitioning. So really great resources for small property owners, large property owners. It was a great event. Then yesterday, I was at the Trucks Event with Supervisor Crandall. We kind of, together, we were there the full day.
There we go.
And that was put on by TARA, which is the Tribal Ego Restoration Alliance. And it was a full day talking about the benefits of fire as medicine, prescribed burning, burn permits, air quality. Doug Gerhart was a presenter, Cal Fire Chief Duncan was a presenter. It was a wonderful event. It was such a diverse group in the room, diverse, diversity in ages, and the tribal team that TARA's been working with and training with there. It was, it was really wonderful and great to see all that work, and so many of our dedicated professionals and volunteers that come together and are doing this work for our county. So it was a great event. And then I was at Six Sigma Friday afternoon through Sunday night. I didn't camp this time, but the mountain bike races were there, and it was incredible how many thousands of people showed up. Thursday, or Friday was the kind of the setup and the pre-ride days, and middle school was Saturday, and high school was Sunday. And to see these athletes, it's pretty mind-blowing, and the families that come to support them and everyone coming into our communities, and then Six Sigma being such gracious hosts. So they'll be back at Six Sigma next month, and then up in Boggs later in May for the state finals, so it's wonderful to be out there. So that was a really full week, and then this week, tomorrow, I'm doing my taxes. Thursday, I have got our Best Fitz Grant meeting in the morning, and then, let's see, I have the CAC meeting in the evening Friday. We have the Workforce Alliance- Friday, we have the Workforce Alliance Governing Board Meeting. Are you going to be going to that?
Yeah, I see that, yeah.
Okay. And then we also have the weekly planning for home hardening, which I haven't been able to attend in several weeks. So I'm going to check in with that team.
I can go to Workforce Alliance.
Okay. Okay, well, I, okay, well, I'll figure it out. And then Monday, meeting with Carol. We have the Risk Reduction Authority, and we usually have the CMAC Committee meeting before, but I don't see it on the calendar. So I'll check in with Tammy on that one. And then back here next Tuesday.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
First of all, I want to thank everybody for patience while I was dealing with a death in the family. So thank you very much for having that understanding. And kind of got back to work yesterday. Attended a roundtable with Congressman Thompson and Jared Huffman and Eshu and also Genghis Gulfman. So it was, it was a good, it was about a two-hour session to talk about being prepared for this fire season, communication from the federal level, what's needed, boots on the ground, some other issues that came up to make sure there's communication, but being prepared for a season that we know is going to be, you know, probably pretty tough. So starting those conversations, we'll continue to have those meetings, and appreciate Carol getting that set up so I could attend that meeting. So today, Board of Supervisors, as Supervisor Sabatier said, tomorrow we have LAFCO, AVA, and then Thursday morning, the Best Fits Grants Meeting. I have that on for Thursday at 9:00 a.m. And then on Friday, Workforce Alliance in North Bay, which I'm probably going to be traveling to attend that in Napa. And then Risk Reduction Authority on Monday, meeting with Carol in the morning. And then back here on Tuesday, the 22nd. So that's what I have right now, just getting back into the swing of things.
Yeah, we're glad you're back, Supervisor Simon. Vice Chair Scott?
Tonight, I will be attending the City of Lakeport Council Meeting at 6:00. Tomorrow morning, 9:00 Agenda Review. I have a constituent meeting at 11:45. And then I have social workers coming over to my house tomorrow afternoon because I'm a resource parent, so that's what I'll be doing then. On Thursday, I actually need to attend the Lake County COC Executive Committee Meeting at 9:00, so I won't make it to the IFT Meeting because we've lost our chair, and as vice chair, I need to step in and run that meeting. So I need to make sure that I'm there. And then the Law Library Meeting at noon. And then Friday, hoping to attend the Blue Zones Meeting. And then I wasn't going to attend the fundraiser in Clearlake, but you're acting, you're actually participating, so I may look into getting tickets and just checking that out and supporting. Is it the Senior Center or what are we supporting, the animals?
It's the Meals on Wheels.
Meals on Wheels. Well, that's a good nonprofit to support and maybe a good laugh, so it might be fun.
Oh, you'll definitely laugh.
And then on Monday, I'm hoping to attend the Innovations Pathway Stakeholders Meeting at 2:00 p.m. and getting ready for our meeting on Tuesday.
All right, thank you. So I'll just report on a couple of things. Last week, I was at the RCRC Installation of New Officers where Dan Miller from, I think it's Nevada County is the new chair. And so he also appointed, I think it's a code deal for me and Supervisor Sabatier as the regulatory committees vice chair. And so in that, we discussed a lot of the legislation and some of the new initiatives that the state's bringing forward, and so we just had a little really in-depth discussion about that. A lot of the bills that you brought forward, Supervisor Sabatier, were discussed. One of them primarily, I've been talking with Public Works Director about, involves, it involves the work that's done on vegetation, and I think it's AB 1717, and it's actually sponsored by Cecilia Aguilar-Curry. And it involves, what is it called, prevailing wage in that situation. And so that's something that I know that the RCRC in rural counties is like kind of worried about when it comes to that because we want to ensure that as much vegetation is taken care of as possible. And so that's just one of the things. So with that, you know, conducted that meeting. The next day, I conducted a Blue Ribbon Committee Meeting where they discussed many of the new projects and initiatives for the lake, looking into some new projects this year, starting to build up for those and hopefully get some, what do you call those, shovel-ready projects, Prop 68 funds prepared for, so that maybe we can get some more work done on the lake. And so some potential projects were discussed and somewhat debated. And then attended the, it was the South Deal Meeting as well, where they discussed a lot of the Clean California Initiative that was going on, some of the things that were cleaned up. And also was really bummed to hear that the Lucerne Roads wasn't funded, but however, they're going to see if they can try to find another source of funding. But then they just also described the projects in Lake County all over when it comes to, they mentioned Supervisor Simon, they mentioned some of the projects in your area as well, of course. And so with that, yeah, I think, let's see, let's go to the calendar this week. I got Agenda Review tomorrow, Roadmap Task Force Meeting at 4, West Region Town Hall. Thursday, so you have the Law Library, you're good with that one? So, okay, so I'll be going to the vets, you know, what we just talked about with Jenny Craven, that at 5, so we can pack for the soldiers and also celebrate their 19 years. Friday, I have a meeting with Supervisor Sabatier, CDD, and the sheriff. Monday, let's see, I think, meeting with Carol. And then back here, what's this invitation? Sorry. Oh, no, yeah, back here on Tuesday for the Board of Supervisors Meeting, and that concludes the calendars. We're a little, we're eight minutes past our next, our other item, but I'll read it off right now. So we have the 9:30, and that is, consideration of hearing on account and proposed assessment for 6974 Harlan Avenue in East California. Let's see, oh, there it is, 6.3.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, again, I would recommend that because this could be challenged, that testimony be taken under oath today, and I believe the property owner is present. So if he wishes to testify, he should also be given the oath.
Okay, I see his hand is up, Mr. Johansson. And so Johanna, if you could conduct that for us, and Mr. Johansson, if you can, I see you're on Zoom. If you can turn your camera on and raise your right hand. If not, at least let us know your, yeah, there he goes. Raise your right hand, and then repeat after Johanna.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right. And so with that, we will go to the description of this, and I'll give it over to Marcus Beltramo.
Good morning. My name is Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager for the Code Enforcement Division within the Community Development Department. Today, I'm accompanied by one of my code enforcement officer, Norman Joey Valdez III. He goes by Joey. Upon completion of an abatement, code enforcement is required to give an account and a proposed assessment for the work that's been conducted. That assessment, if approved by the board, will be recorded as a lien against the property. So first, we always like to start with a property description, so everybody has some context of the situation. The property here is located at 6974 Harlan Avenue. That's in East California. The property owner reflected on title is a David Johansson. It is zoned an R1 property. It does have a single-family dwelling located on the property. I do want to give some context here. This has been a problem property for us for the last two, three years, ever since I've been employed with the county. We've towed inoperable wreck vehicles from this location numerous times, complaints of squatters in the property, trash, those kind of things. Fortunately, we never were able to go on the property and abate it. Those issues were dumped on the street, and we had to use our legal dump funds to address those matters. On October 5th, 2021, we determined that the property was in violation. We issued a notice of nuisance and an order to abate. We cited the violations for existence of garbage and rubbish and violations of the open and outdoor storage. To allow the property owner time to correct these issues, we also issued a second notice. Here are sites taken, are photos taken of the site. The occupants would not allow us on the property. The people that were occupying the property wouldn't allow us on, and they were very disrespectful towards us and made some comments that were derogatory in nature. These are the photos taken from the street. And as you can see on the right, there's a boat. That boat is filled with trash. There's a trailer to the right of that boat. That trailer is filled with trash. On the left is just another view of the trailer and the boat. Again, we didn't have a legal vantage point to see the entire property. This is all what we could see from the street. There's just two more pictures of the boat of trash and the trailer of trash. We did try to contact the proprietor owner, David Johansson. Again, a big part of what we do is due process, and that involves one element of that is notification. We sent the notifications to the property listed on county records. All those mailings were returned to us. It was only later during the abatement process, we got in contact with the property owner and learned that the mailing address was not valid or no longer being used. Before the property owner became involved or that we were aware that he was still around and cared for the property, a determination was made to move forward. The issue's persisting on the property. We could no longer allow them to continue to persist. We had to move forward with an abatement, and we executed, or we were requested an inspection and abatement warrant that was issued by a Lake County Superior Court Judge. As part of the inspection and abatement warrant, our contractors need to get on site. Also, we need to have a further or full understanding of the extent and the scope of the violations existing. Under the California Code of Civil Procedures, we get 14 days for an inspection warrant. We use the inspection warrant to get on site, view the property and the extent of the issues persisting, and also give our contractors a opportunity to make a competent quote. So obviously, when we got on there, we got up close pictures. As you can see, that's a lot of trash. There's just another view behind the trailer, which we could not see from the street initially, more trash and/or rubbish. On the side of the house, on the backside, you could see more open outdoor storage violations, rubbish, trash, and then tires. Tires are always an issue for us. There's chemicals in the tires that, you know, if they, if they come off the tires, they get in the ground, it rains, they get into our lakes and our creeks and our streams. So tires are always a sensitive issue for code enforcement. The abatement was conducted on October 13th, 2022. Leonard Holling was the contractor. We only received one bid or one quote from our contractors. We only have a list of two contractors. He removed 10 tires, 4,800 pounds of garbage and rubbish, and two buckets of unknown liquids. Here you can see the work being done. They had the excavator, they pulled the trash out of the trailer, dumped it in the trailer, and they took them to the facility here in Lakeport to be disposed of. On the left, you see the before picture. On the right, you see the after picture. On the left, again, you see the before picture. This is when our contractor compiled the rubbish and trash into a pile, and then you can see the after, when it was removed. Again, trash in the corner there, rubbish, and again, once it was removed, and same picture here. And the tires, we took care of the tires. They were dumped and disposed of properly as well. I do want to make some additional notes here. This is a issue that we deal with consistently with these properties, is that once we start the abatement action, people try to clean up the properties for whatever reason, whether they don't want us doing inspection, seeing the inside, or think they're doing the right thing. The boat that was on the Harlan property on the left there ended up dumped on Collier Avenue in East. We now, because it's on private property, we now have to address this issue with that property owner. And so that property owner has now incurred this issue. An additional note, this carcass of this automobile found on the Harlan property was dumped at the end of Lakeview. So we had to use our legal dumping funds for that. So unless County Council has some advice on this one, we, I don't believe we're able to tie the cost of this to the lien on this property. We had to use our legal dumping funds for that. Again, these wreck cars, these dismantled cars, they can't stay on our streets, they can't stay in close proximity to the highway. That is a point of emphasis for this Code Enforcement Division.
Ms. Grant?
There's nothing that can be done as to this one, but with certain additions to the notice process, these can be addressed in going forward. And one further thing, just because we're making a record here, there was a slide that said the abatement occurred in October of 2022. It's March, so it's probably October 2021.
So I have a question on that. Even though we can prove that this was on the property and now, I mean, you can definitely clearly see that that is the same vehicle somewhere else.
I have never seen a car like that.
That, there's no way we can go after that, after the fact, Anita? We can't, I mean, that's definitely, there's something we can do after this.
Oh, you may be able to charge this person for the illegal dumping, but not as part of this particular action, is my point. And there are some things that you may be able to do consequent to an overall abatement action that might assist with this, but it's not present here. So what the code enforcement manager is saying is correct. You can't do anything about this. But illegal dumping, where you can prove ownership of the debris, is certainly actionable against the owner. So that'll be a separate action.
And I would love to see that come back because you have clear evidence, and we need to stop this. It's disgusting that our streets are being used as dumping zones. It just, it makes me angry.
And I'd like to iterate, this is a, happens all the time. This is a continual issue for us. I'm not sure if it's a financial issue, but trash, when it needs to be removed from the property, it doesn't end up in the dump, ends up in a pile. And there's actually three piles in the hills of East right now that we're, actually, my officers are out assessing right now that are going to have to be dealt with, and they're substantial piles of trash and garbage. So this is common for a common issue we deal with, and I do appreciate County Council's input on this, and we are going to be exploring these avenues in the future to address these issues and hold those people accountable.
Ms. Grant?
If I may, another thing that code enforcement may wish to look at, my office can certainly assist, is adding a little additional muscle to the illegal dumping provisions of county code, because we can certainly beef those up and give them a little bit more to be able to work with than they presently have.
I do appreciate that very much. And illegal dumping, that's the one thing, not to digress a little bit, illegal dumping is something we're very good at. As soon as we come across these sites, we get on top of it, we get it out of there. There's no reason anybody should have to deal with illegal dumping. Going back to the presentation.
Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
Quick question. I agree directing to staff to look to see if we can make sure and upgrade and bolster our illegal dumping stuff and bringing it back to us, especially by using examples, real-life examples of what you're dealing with. We want to make sure to add those types of things in there. But my question to you is, oh, goodness, I started talking and then I forgot. Yes, do you check for dump receipts? Sorry.
So we can make the request to have those individuals provide us with dump receipts. I don't believe there's a statutory mechanism that requires them to provide dump receipts, but we always are emphatic to request that, and it's another way we try to encourage them to dump it properly. Again, if they get, remove it from the property and they did not provide a dump receipt, I don't believe we have a basis for which to act. But again, we do give them the, you know, we do ask for those things, and hopefully that gives them the impression that we are encouraging them to dump properly, dispose of it.
Probably right now you don't have, but again, that's something that can certainly be addressed with regard to receipts. As these problems accrue and crop up and code enforcement learns these circumstances, there are ways to, I mean, there's no, there's no panacea here to prevent people who are bound and determined to illegally dump, but there are additional controls that can be put into place to make it much more difficult for them not to get caught.
Ms. Grant, I just have a quick question. We have a hard stop at 10:00. We have to conduct a meeting with CPUC. I want to get to a point where we can, like, just stop and break and that way we can move forward with the next portion of it. Are you almost finished with the presentation?
Well, we're done with the presentation here, but the property owner, to my knowledge, is on Zoom. And he may contest some of our administrative costs, or he may have some additional input.
And I think that's going to be lengthy. So I want to, I want to give time for, I want to give him his accurate time. I don't want to rush him. And so if we could do like a stop right here and take a break from now until, when do you think we'll be finished with the other, with the? 10:35 at the latest? And Mr. Johansson, are you, are you amenable to that?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, yeah, because we want to give you your time. We don't want to rush you. You know, it's like, we have, we have to do this meeting. We already agreed to it. And we want to make sure that you get your time and everything is done accurately when it comes to this. So, so yeah, if you have anything else to just finalize for this moment in time?
So really, it's just the costs? If you want me, if you want me to come back, I can do it? Or I can just do it right now, real quick?
Let's just come back and do it, yeah. Let's go from, we know where we're at right here on this screen and we'll go from there. Because then that way we can be a little more fresh in our minds. So like a summary recap type of thing to?
I think that's fair.
Okay, excellent. And so what we'll do is we will just pause and take a break until 10:35. And we'll be right back here and we'll start right back from where we left off here. Thank you, Mr. Beltramo. All right, with that, we will, we will go to a break and we'll see you at 10:35. Thank you, Sam. And we are back. We're going to continue on with our 6.3. Marcus, you were, you were in the middle of or at the, at the point of going ahead and talking more about this, this situation. And so I'll go give it right back to you and continue on.
So we're just going to tie up the presentation here with our recommendation. The construction or the abatement cost was $1,600. Our administrative costs amounted to $933.30. So staff is recommending, the board supervisors confirm the assessment of $2,533.30. And to direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property. After recordation, it shall be delivered to the county auditor, who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment roll as a special assessment. Again, the total amount that we are recommending the board approve is $2,500, $533.30.
All right, any questions for Marcus from the board?
And I apologize, the break might have created this question. I'm so sorry.
No, go ahead, by all means.
This started back in October 2021, correct?
Yes, that's when we ended up getting some complaints about this property.
Okay.
Actually, I'd like to go back further. The problems with this property started.
We need a microphone, sir.
Joey started this investigation back in October of 2021. The problems with this property had preceded that for years, two, at the minimum, two years before this situation.
But today, we're only looking at the one that specifically started as of that timeframe. The notice of violation was provided at what point after? Was that the October 22nd that the notice of violation was provided? And just wondering, how much time did they have? Was there extensions? Just kind of curious as to what the entire length of time looked like? What kind of opportunities were provided to make sure that they would be in compliance? I'm not sure if that was in your presentation or if I just didn't remember.
I think that's a fair question. In code enforcement, part of what we do is notification and giving responsible parties proper time to notify them of the issue and give them a reasonable amount of time to correct those issues. In this situation or this instance, the first notice was issued on October 5th, 2021, and a second notice was issued on November 12th, 2021, both providing a 30-day correction period.
Any other questions? All right, it looks like we have Mr. Johansson. If you're on, would you like to?
Yes, I just wanted to state that I basically had no idea that a, what do you call them? A squatter basically had broken the locks on the front door, broken into the home, basically started living there and, you know, proceeded to basically create chaos, right? You know, with the trash and everything that they had brought. Essentially, I have a local friend. I had him go over, talk to the person there, told them that essentially you have a certain amount of time to remove your stuff, or we're going to remove it for you. So essentially, he got some feedback from this person, you know, it was illegally squatting, that he was going to clear it up. Yeah, I guess because he didn't want to lose his property. And I was basically going to have my friend go by there again and check on him. And that's when I had gotten the notice or the second notice from code enforcement. You know, I've been in this property since 2010. You know, I've been in the county, you know, since probably before that, you know, with friends with John Jensen and Elizabeth Larson for Lake County News. Met many of the local administrative people, you know, in Upper Lake, the Tallman Hotel. So, you know, I had a pretty positive view of what I thought Lake County was as far as investment in the future there. So this, this has really come as a big surprise, you know, that Norman, you know, I forget his last name, from the code enforcement office, you know, basically saying this is a problem in Lake County that homes being broken into and being trashed and things of that nature. You know, so it's really making me doubt, you know, why did I invest there, you know? So essentially, this has all been a surprise for me. I really don't have any issues with paying for the cleanup. You know, I think as a property owner, that's just something that's going to happen. You know, it's your liability of owning property. It's just the revelation of all this and the amount of chaos that this person has created is really kind of the most revealing from all of this. My only objection, you know, as a regular taxpayer in the county, you know, for multiple properties, you know, I pay a lot of county taxes and I thought that the administrative costs were punitive, you know, for something that I really had no control over. I did want to clean it up, you know, and I was doing some kind of investigation of how I was going to do that. And basically, I found out about the warrant and that they had to do it immediately. So I really knew at that point I had no other option but to let them move forward. So my only request from the board is that the administrative costs, you know, if they can not be assessed on the property, you know, as a taxpayer. Other than that, you know, I have the best hopes for Lake County and that things improve, you know, in the future. You know, and this is kind of my first exposure, you know, into, you know, any issue like this on any properties I've owned, you know, anywhere in the state. So, and I've just started researching about the issue throughout the whole state of California about, you know, these people that break into homes and basically take over and it takes legal action and a lot of money to try and get them out. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Johansson. Supervisor Pyska was first?
Mr. Johansson, I have a couple of questions about your comment. So is this a squatter or someone that you knew was living there?
It's basically someone who broke the locks on the front door, replaced them. Because when I called the police, they, their assumption is because he has keys to the front door that somehow he is permitted there.
And as a landlord, how often do you visit your properties?
I, I used to come up about every month or so, but lately, you know, I've had some other obligations, so I haven't been up there in a while.
Like a couple of years?
I do have a friend that lives in Lucerne, you know, that I have go over there, you know, whenever I have any issues.
This problem didn't happen overnight.
I was just made aware of it when code enforcement sent me that letter.
Is it, you said something about your, the person living there wanted to clean up so they didn't lose their property? So I was confused by that statement.
Oh, meaning whatever that was going to be towed away, whatever was going to be removed?
Okay, so as a landlord, you know, and a participant in our economy and you do have a responsibility to maintain your properties and to have people, you say you have people check on them, but this, this problem got out of hand a long time ago. That's where I'm confused. I, you know, it sounds like you're being critical of our code enforcement.
Oh, no, no, I'm not critical of code enforcement.
Okay, good, because that's what it sounded like and.
I have no.
You know, that's their, you know, that's what their task with doing is maintaining a clean, safe environment for our residents and.
I think my only issue is that, you know, as a property owner in the county, that you have a legal trespasser and that legal trespasser is creating, you know, havoc, right? And there seems to be no legal recourse to resolve that.
Yeah, it's, you know, as a landlord, this is something that you're going to come up against likely in other properties. And, you know, how do you do three-day evictions? Everything that, you know, that, it's kind of your responsibility to maintain your land. And I don't feel like that's an adequate argument to have the administrative fees waived when we had to have so many of our staff hours dedicated to this project. That's all I have.
And what is the purpose of our taxes that we pay?
I'm sorry, your property taxes?
No, no, I'm just saying of all the taxes we pay for, in the county.
Well, if you're not here very often, I would assume that you're only paying property taxes and that is a very long discussion for a budget day. But when we have to have code enforcement come out to a property, that department is self-funded, which means they bill for every hour that they, that they work on different projects. And so that's what these administrative fees are for, covering their time and the county's time so that, you know, other people don't have to cover the cost of the work for your property.
Supervisor Sabate?
I appreciate the comments from Supervisor Pyska. They're very similar to the ones I wanted to make and so I'll just be short and succinct. We have personal responsibilities and when personal responsibilities become a community responsibility, that's when we have problems. And when we have to go out and take care of things, the fact that you did not take action until even, well, you took no action, but even the fact that you got a second notification means that you weren't taking action, that is putting your responsibilities into our community and making it their responsibility. And to request that we do not pay for the work done, we're not making money off this. It's very specific as to the amount of time that was spent, but we surely should not be giving away public funds to provide assistance to your private property because you are not able to take on that responsibility. The reason I'm saying this is not for you, sir. I want to say that for the general public. Personal responsibilities need to lay exactly where they started, which is the personal responsibilities. Once it becomes a community responsibility, that is not fair to the community. We should not be taking on those types of responsibilities. Appreciate the work that was done. Looking forward to a whole lot more than the last two meetings than what, that we've seen. But this is exactly the kind of stuff that we want to see in our community is cleanups. Compliance is the easiest way and safest way and best way to go. That means you are taking that personal responsibility head-on. But unfortunately, there's times where we do have to take action because if all we're doing is submitting violations and not taking those actions, then we're not actually changing our communities for the better. So appreciate the work that was done and it's a big no on taking away the administrative fines.
Supervisor Scott?
I wholeheartedly agree with what has been said from the other two supervisors. I was thinking the same thing, but I know a comment was made about he wouldn't have invested here in Lake County if he knew that this was an issue. And I would have to say this is an issue across the United States. A property that has been abandoned, not taken care of, you're going to find this, it's not just a Lake County problem. This is a problem everywhere when properties are not tended to. And no to relieving the administrative fines.
Mr. Beltramo?
I'd just like to comment, we did try to help with the squatter situation. We did have, the squatter had a key to the house, the dwelling. He allowed our building inspector in there. We cited 40 violations, unsafe issues. The back deck was unsafe. So we actually put red tags all over the property. We roped it off with caution tape. The squatter removed that within the next day or two. And the recourse for that is to file a complaint with the sheriff's office for trespass. We've had conversations with them and I believe that they're up to speed. Their patrol units are aware of these issues and know how to handle them. I'd also like just to add, you know, on the comment of why to invest, the property has a lot of potential. It has a great view of the lake. And we actually have a second notice pending against this property because of the continued squatter issues, drug, issues of drugs being used in public. Our air quality department has been involved with this. Animal control's been involved with it, the sheriff's been involved with this. So we've actually had to put a second notice to secure the property. And we'd just like to ask Mr. Johansson for him to take those steps to fence off his property, secure his property and so that the county doesn't have to step in and do this.
Or sell his property because we have so many people in need of a house.
Mr. Johansson, do you have anything else to add? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. So with that, is, I open this to public input, right? Or I don't need to because it's a hearing, right?
You can still call for public comment.
Okay, I'll open it for public comment. Is there anyone in the room that wants to speak on this? I'm not seeing anyone. I'll look online, I'm not seeing any hands raised on Zoom. And we'll bring it back to the board for action. This is in my district and I'll be glad for anybody to motion, motion this for me. And I fully agree with all the statements that are made. And I'll just add that in my, in the District III, there's a lot of these and I'm grateful that this is getting done. I'd have to kind of expound on what you were saying, Vice Chair Scott. I know a gentleman had bought in a tax defaulted auction. He bought a property and, you know, didn't realize that it was riddled with garbage and squatters and all of that stuff. And it was also a problem property on the highway. And when he came, he did immediately clean it up and now he's selling it or whatever the case may be. But those are the type of things that we need is just some people that, when they have their properties, they, they got to research it, what they're going to invest and they got to attend to it. It's unfortunate, but that's a lot of what we talk about. So a lot of things that need to be done. So with that being said, Supervisor Sabate?
Mr. Chair, I move to confirm the assessment of $2,533.30 and direct staff to record a notice of special assessment lien against the property. The cost of abatement services was $1,600 and the administrative costs on this case amounted to $933.30.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Johansson, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabate?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your work on this and for your presentation. Mr. Johansson, thank you for attending, giving us your insight on this. Hopefully, everything works out with this situation.
Yeah, keep them coming.
All right, it looks like we're at our 10:30, 6.4. An A, an update on 2022 drought conditions, Lake County, California, and B, updates from drought-related meeting groups, including the Comprehensive Drought Work Group, the Drought Emergency Operations Center, the Lake County Drought Task Force and the Tree Mortality Task Force. And it looks like we have Deputy Delgiani's here. And I will hand this off to you.
Awesome, good morning. Thank you so much, Board. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for having me this morning. Awesome. Good morning. Thank you so much, Board. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for having me this morning. I do have a presentation, and I'm going to share my screen with you all. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Great. All right. So Marina Del Giannis, Deputy Water Resources Director. I am here to give you an update on current drought conditions for our Lake County community. And with that being said, I have a few talking points. So when it comes to drought, there's a lot that we can cover. I know we have roughly 30 minutes, and we're going to be hearing from a few people. So I just want to set the stage for what we're going to be talking about today. So again, I'm going to be doing an overview of our current statewide drought conditions. I will be sharing information on our current and predicted Clear Lake and lake levels. Then we will shuffle on over to the, the status of any open and closed Clear Lake public boat ramps. I'm going to do an overview of our current work groups that we have. We have a few work groups that are highlighting and discussing droughts throughout our community. So I'm going to do an overview of those work groups. I would like to focus our today's discussion on SB 552, which is a new requirement from the state. And then, of course, providing any resources from the county and the state. So with that here, I have a few graphics available, and this is from, these resources are from the NOAA and the USDA. All this is public information, and I will have information available. If folks want to have this information on their own, they can feel free to reach out to us, and I can provide you the link. Or you can just Google US Drought Monitor Conditions from NOAA, and you can highlight and funnel in on wherever you want to look at, whether it be the greater country as a whole or focus on our Western US here. So you can see the current status of our drought conditions in Lake County. We are in severe drought conditions. And then looking at the precipitation that we've seen, you can highlight, you can see here, Lake County, if you guys can see my cursor. We are much below average precipitation as of March 2022. So again, we are entering a third consecutive drought year. We can anticipate that although pressing our fingers, we get a few more inches of rain, getting some rain down the, down the drain, we're not going to be getting that much more going into the, into the drier months here. So here I have a graph of our current Clear Lake conditions, lake conditions. So the following assumptions were made. If no precipitation affecting the lake levels were received in March, again, we received some rain last night. It was really nice to hear on my window panes, but we did not receive as much as we are looking for. Evaporation in March is not accounted for, and the trend is reflecting the evaporation losses of year 2021. So with this graph, we have a few lines here that I would like to highlight. So this blue dotted line here, this is looking at the stage in 1970, 1977. And then we have the gray line here that is reflecting in 2014. And then this yellow line here, that shows the stage of 2021. And you can see some of these highlights of where the stage of our lake is. This is measured in our RUMZI gauge, where these stages are at in these any given points. So we highlighted a few of those to folks to easily see. And then we also have the predicted stage of 2022. Again, this is just a prediction, looking at the current trends that we have been seeing and looking at to see where we can get an idea of where we may be in the future. So if we shovel, shuffle on over to October 17th, again, this is just a prediction, looking at negative 3.2 RUMZI, again, only a prediction. And this map, this graphic was created earlier last week. So you can see that on March 11th, we are at 0.48 RUMZI. Now, folks do have access to get the lake levels Monday through Friday if you are interested in receiving those daily lake levels. And it also shares where we were at currently last year. You can send us an email at water/resources@lakecountyc.gov, and we can put you on that listserv. We also have the daily anticipated forecast for today and then moving forward to the rest of the week when we do share those lake levels. So now I'd like to shimmy on over to our boat ramps that are currently open. So as you can see here, here are the current, Lake County and city maintained ramps. Here is the depth at the end of the ramp. We collected these measurements last summer. So we were able, and we showed how we were able to collect those measurements of where the end of that ramp is. And then the current ramps that are closed right now are Lucerne Harbor and Keeling Park. All right. So looking at the current Lake County drought work groups, we have a few here. The two at the top, right here, the first one is the 2021 Drought EOC. And then I also have below each graphic who initiated that group. So the Lake County EOC was initiated by County OES, so the Operation Emergency Services. So the 2021 Drought EOC meets monthly. I believe that's still the case, but any board members, please correct me if that is incorrect. So representatives from local tribal governments, the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport, the state and county OES, so including special districts administration, public services, public works, water resources, and agriculture. It's just a roundtable discussion, sharing any updates and foster situational awareness of projects and other key information regarding our county drought. So again, that group was developed by our county OES. Now moving over to the Lake County Comprehensive Drought Planning Work Group. And then I will say that I did switch these two around. So the Lake County Comprehensive Drought Planning Work Group was initiated by the Board of Supervisors. So I will make this modification to the final slideshow, and then I can share that with the Board of Supervisors. And we will also have this presentation on our Water Resources website. So this group was developed by, it's a board-appointed committee, which was approved on October 5th of 2021. So this work group is in the development phase. We've had one meeting, and we are, I'm anticipating that we will have further conversations today. So it anticipated that representatives from the Board of Supervisors and county departments, such as special districts, public works, water resources, public health, agriculture, air quality, OES, environmental health, community development department, and public services will contribute and discuss the drought and how it's currently affecting our Lake County community and next steps in terms of how we can do comprehensive drought planning. Now, the Lake County Drought Task Force, that was initiated by the California Department of Water Resources and Civic Spark AmeriCorps fellows. So this group has been meeting for a little over a year. The Civic Spark fellows that did develop this group are no longer serving. They have graduated from this fellowship. But we are still meeting on a monthly basis. And this was, again, developed by the California Department of Water Resources. So we have friends from DWR who participate in these monthly discussions. And basically, what we do is we just share resources. We have a lot of water purveyors. We have tribal representatives. We have city, state, and county representatives also in this work group. We talk about any funding, any projects that are going on, and basically just next steps in terms of how we can do proper outreach and education in drought, and anticipating that we will continue on with drought in, in the near and far future moving forward. So some highlights and accomplishments of this current drought group is this past year, we were able to get some funds set aside, and we did some outreach. You may have seen some posters and billboards and some of our Lake County Transit with outreach and education regarding conserving water. So even when we're not in a drought year, it's still important for folks to conserve water. All right. So moving on over to SB 552. This is Senate Bill 552, which focuses on the water shortage planning for small water suppliers and counties. So basically, how this group, how this Senate bill was developed, it follows, it's a, it follows its sister Assembly Bill 1668, which was passed in 2018. So AB 1668 is the Water Management Planning Law. So this bill required that the State Water Resources Control Board, in coordination with the Department of Water Resources, adopt long-term standards for the efficient use of water as provided, and performance measures for commercial, industrial, and institutional water use on or before June 30th, 2022. So with this, the state focused on a few different areas. And then they therefore developed SB 552, which is what I'm going to be talking about here in the next few slides, which was passed in 2021. So during the whole process of AB 1668, the California Department of Water Resources, also referred to as DWR, posted, focused on different small water systems and rural communities, also referred to as CDAG, Risk Scoring and Tools. So looked at, they, with this assessment, they looked at different communities and identified different risks and small water systems and rural communities as it relates to drought. With this CDAG and this Risk Scoring Tool, they developed recommendations on how to cover them with water shortage contingency plans. From this tool, again, they developed SB 552. I have the link here to the Senate Bill, which I will not be reading word for word. But folks are able to explore that Senate Bill and all the requirements. Again, this is still a work in process, and we are getting routine updates and resources and assistance from the state on how we can make sure that we follow all the protocol as outlined in the Senate Bill. So the next few slides, I was able to borrow from our friends with the California Department of Water Resources. Again, we are in routine conversations regarding SB 552. Our direct point of contact, Julie Ekstrom, with California Department of Water Resources, participates in every one of our drought, drought task force work group discussions, which again, we meet on the second Thursday of every month. And here we have information on how SB 552 is broken down. So with SB 552, they look at small water systems, and then they also look at counties. So it outlines requirements that small water systems are supposed to do, and same with counties. And they also put it on responsibilities that the state is supposed to do as required by SB 552. So small water system, less than 1,000 connections are supposed to a bridged water shortage plan. And then small water systems with over 1,000 connections do ERP and drought supply assessments. Now, a lot of our small water, a lot of our water purveyors throughout the counties, again, they participate in these work groups, and they are well aware what they're supposed to do. And a lot of them are actually ahead of the game in doing what we're supposed to do. And again, with this assistance and support, whether it be from grant funding and then also just the support from our friends at the state. Now the counties, we are supposed to develop a drought task force and water shortage contingency plan. So two, two-prong effort here. And basically, this supports homes on private supplies and state smalls, which is less than 15 connections. Other requirements that are outlined in SB 552, so water supply condition annual reporting and infrastructure upgrades as standard for drought resilience. Now, when it comes to the state, they understand that they are given these requirements to make sure that we can sustainably manage our water supplies in current and future drought years. They set responsibilities from themselves. So again, again, they are tasked with, they tasked themselves with providing planning and data support tools. So they have some tools and resources that they have shared with us and that they are constantly updating and providing for us, including regularly update drought risk assessment and tools, which again, everyone has access to, and then a standing interagency task force. So with this interagency task force, they have established a task force to consider all water user types and develop ways to improve coordination. So with this, that was one reason why these AmeriCorps Civic Spark fellows developed the Comprehensive Drought Work Group with our Lake County community. And again, as developed by DWR, we have a direct point of contact who is helping us get the understanding of SB 552, what our requirements are, what are these resources that we can take advantage of to make sure that not only are we fulfilling these requirements as outlined by the Senate Bill, but also to make sure, again, that we are sustainably managing our water resources. So now I would like to just highlight again SB 552 as it relates to small water supplies. Because again, they have it broken down into small water supplies and then counties. So in terms of small water supplies, they are tasked with developing a water shortage contingency plan. I know a lot of our water purveyors have already developed that and are in the process of developing that. And then these requirements also outline how they need to develop this water shortage contingency plan. And then they also, of course, have annual reporting requirements that they need to fulfill as well. Now, in terms of our drought requirements of SB 552 with the counties, again, we are tasked with establishing a standing drought task force or a similar alternative. Again, the county did develop a board-appointed Comprehensive Drought Work Group. So that task force would fulfill the obligations of SB 552. Now with that, if we were to successfully fulfill the obligations of SB 552, there are certain requirements and deliverables that this drought task force would have to accomplish. And again, we have the support from the state. Now, on top of developing a standing drought task force or a similar alternative, we are also tasked with developing a drought and water shortage plan. Now with next steps of SB 552, again, small water suppliers are tasked with drought planning contacts, triggering mechanisms and levels for actions, and developing water shortage mitigation, response, customer communications, enforcement, and relief actions that align with the water shortage levels that they are seeing in their systems. Counties' next steps for us is to develop, establish a standing drought task force, which we have done, and develop a water and shortage plan. Now, next steps for the state, again, continue engagement and outreach with counties and develop resources and guidance in compliance with SB 552, which they are actively doing. Here, I would like to highlight a few resources that we have. This is a collection of not only county resources, but also state and then other resources as provided by other groups around the state. So one being the RCAC, which is a low interest loan. All of these resources are here on our Water Resources website. We are in the process of developing a drought hub, per se, to include all the resources as it relates to drought. So having updated data on current lake levels, boat, or boat launches that are open, public boat launches that are open on our lake, any sort of funding opportunities, any sort of work that is being done as it relates to the drought. So again, we currently have these on our Water Resources website now. But we here at your Lake County Water Resources are in the process of developing a landing page so folks can have access to that. And of course, having segues into your specific water purveyors, there's a lot of work being done by our local water purveyors and other groups around the county as it relates to drought. So just having a one, one area where folks can get to and, and see any information or updates as it relates to our current drought conditions. So this RCAC is a low interest loan that folks can, can apply for to whether it be construct, refurbish, or replace individual water well systems. Then you have the California Department of Water Resources, my dry well reporting. That is where folks are able to report if their well is dry. If that is difficult for you to navigate or if you have questions on that, you are more than welcome to give us a call here at Water Resources, and we can help you submit that dry well report. You can also go ahead and give us a call if you don't want to support that, your, your dry well in the DWR portal. You can give us a call, and we are also keeping tabs of that internally as well. And then here at the Lake County Water Resources Department, we also have a groundwater well monitoring interest form. If you're interested in us adding your well to our buy-in well runs that we do twice a year, you can go ahead and, go ahead and fill out this form, and we would see if that would be possible for us to add your monitoring well to our monitoring collection system. So again, all these resources are on our Water Resources website, which you can find here at lakecountyc.gov. And then you can go on Lake County Water Resources. You can come visit us on the third floor of the Lake County Courthouse. Give us a call at 707-263-2344, or send us an email at water/resources@lakecountyc.gov. And then, of course, I also have the email, the website links to our friends from the California Department of Water Resources, their drought landing page, and then also our friends at the California Water Boards. So that is what I have right now for my update, and I will go ahead and pass it over to the Board of Supervisors for any questions or comments or additional input.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions from the board or Supervisor Sabate?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I don't know if this is something that we can do today or if we need to bring it back. And I'm not going to turn around, but I'm kind of looking at the folks behind me. We created the Drought Management Plan Task Force to be able to kind of figure out what is a holistic Lake County plan? What do we expect from our schools? What do we expect from our golf courses? What do we expect from all the different types of users, agriculture included? So that we can have a plan when we reach a certain point in, in a drought that everybody can take part in. I'd like to know if we can direct that we align that committee with SB 552 because it was kind of created prior to SB 552 giving us that direction? Or if we need to come back with a future agenda, maybe on next week or as soon as possible, to be able to update what the goal, goals are for that committee so that it is aligned with the state requirements? Just wanted to put that out there.
So that committee at this point is an internal committee. So then would that composition change and be public? Because we had intended to look at our, our, our own procedures first and our own policies. So how would that change?
And maybe that's where it needs to just be a, a new agenda because we are required by the state to have that. by the state to have that committee. And so, I know in speaking with Deputy Director Marina, that it fits. It's just maybe not exactly what it should be, and I want to make sure we meet the requirements of the state, and so maybe review again what it is that we're doing.
Yeah, and I am in agreement with that. Supervisor Scott and I were asked how agriculture can participate, and that was kind of where we were stuck, because we weren't quite sure where the public can show up for these meetings. And so, if we can adjust that committee, we've only just gotten started, so it's not that difficult. I'd be in favor of that.
Ms. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My office can provide some information with regard to the legal requirements on this. As far as today's item, as Supervisor Sabatier notes, this is a presentation-only item, so it would be better if you put it over for the next agenda with whatever type of action you might be considering. As you know, the point of the agenda is to tell the public what might be considered on any given board day.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to add two comments. And Deputy Director Del Giannis, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I wanted to make sure that the public was aware that right now, our dam over in the South Lake area is not open. Yolo County is not taking more water than what fish and wildlife requires us to allow to trickle down, so that there's no fish die-off further down the creek. And until it reaches a specific RUMSE level, which does not look at this moment in time that it will, that Yolo County Flood Control will not be utilizing the water from our lake for agricultural purposes at this moment in time. And I believe it might be 3.22 RUMSE that it has to reach in order for them to have access, but it's in the Solano decree that states exactly when they legally have the right to use our lake water. Wanted to make that statement. And also, that there is work being done continuously over in our Water Resources Department to look at extending our ramps. I know that we brought that up a while ago. I know the topographical maps have been worked on for the ramps that have not been fixed or taken care of, and so that work continues as well. And I know that's something that's important to us, important to the tourism, and important just overall to Lake County.
Right, right now, it's at .50 today. Last year was at 1.11 today, last year, and it was at 4.57 in 2020, and 9.46 in 2019 during this timeframe. So just wanted to highlight that. Yeah. Anything else from the Board? I'll open it up for public input. You can come up in however three minutes.
Joan Moss, I would like to know, we are under a severe drought. That's what she said. And how can we allow development such as commercial marijuana? And why did we allow vineyards when the water use would increase? Water use for commercial marijuana development would increase the use of water. On the one hand, we have severe drought. That's a situation. On the other hand, we're allowing development that uses more water. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Just to go off of that, so we are in constant communication. Again, that is the importance of having these drought workgroups and having this active dialogue with our friends, not only with the state level, but also with the county as well. So we do have participation from our friends at the Lake County Environmental Health, and then also Community Development Department. And these are conversations that we are having.
Thank you very much for that insight.
Bobby Dutcher, Lakeport, water storage is going to be very important. And so, you know, Yolo County won't get any of the water from Clear Lake this year, but they still get water out of Indian Valley Reservoir. It's about the only way those farms can operate. But Indian Valley, I was up there Saturday, is really, really low. So one more drought, if they drain Indian Valley completely, we have another drought. I don't know what those farmers are going to do. Even for firefighting purposes, reservoirs like Indian Valley and Lake Pillsbury are extremely important. So we're only about three weeks away from an environmental group filing a lawsuit to dismantle the dam at Scott Dam and losing Lake Pillsbury. It's a critical source for water storage, for a lot of reasons, for the environment, for firefighting. So we really need to do something to protect that. Billions of gallons of water storage are about to disappear from Lake County if we don't do something to stick up for Lake Pillsbury. So early April, I think, is when they're going to file a lawsuit. So it's really important that we pay attention to that. We're not getting much, you know, from the chambers standpoint, we're not getting much feedback from our state representatives. They seem to be our best bet. It's, the lake is in a district, it's in John Garamendi's district right now, but the new districts, the way they've been aligned, it'll become Mike Thompson's. So it's just kind of a forgotten orphan right now. It's kind of in a transition between those two congressmen, and they've got a lot on their plate with everything else. But at the state level, I think that's one way that we really need to start, at least try to get one of our state representatives to do something, have the state take over that lake, so we don't lose that water storage. So thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
Just want to say, discussions have already been had and will continue to be had with Congressman Thompson. And you're right, that after the election in November is when he will officially take on that part of the district, but conversations are occurring.
All right. Is there any other Republican put inside the chambers? I don't see any. And so, I am looking at the attendees on Zoom, and I don't see any. And so, I need to move to Item B on this, right? Or was that all encompassing? Updates from drought-related meeting groups, including the comprehensive drought workgroup? Was that all, that was all included, right?
Yeah, just not the tree mortality. I can speak to that.
Okay, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so the Risk Reduction Authority, I think it was in February, convened the tree mortality task force, which has PG&E and Public Works and CAL FIRE, and most recently, Caltrans has agreed to also join. And that is to focus on the priorities of hardening the communities where the tree mortality is happening, and the roadways. Hopefully, we can get to the roadways. That's really difficult for us right now, because we don't have the capacity in our county to start clearing dead trees out of the easements. So that is something that happened after the valley fire, and that was with FEMA support. So we're trying to figure out, you know, how to move through that. PG&E's been really helpful. They've really stepped up to the plate. They've redesigned their program, so that now they'll be hauling the wood off instead of just leaving it. And that was, that's huge. That's huge. And they're doing that countywide. They're coming to that group and reporting where they are with their additional survey, when the work is starting. And so, I'm really hoping that that's going to continue with Caltrans, too. So they're doing some vegetation work in our county, but they don't really have any plans to come back for two more years. So getting them to those meetings is crucial right now, so that we don't have to wait several years for them to get to work on their easements here. And also, we have Clerk, and I think that's it, that's coming to those meetings pretty regularly. So we'll be sending our next meeting soon. It is open to the public. It is a committee of the Risk Reduction Authority. So if anyone's interested in that work, Risk Reduction Authority, we're having our meeting on Monday. And then, we'll likely announce the next meeting for the tree mortality. But if anybody missed the town hall, say it again, it was great. And it is recorded on our county Facebook page and our county YouTube channel.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, first off, good job on that tree mortality meeting that you had. I know it's very visible to everybody just driving into Lake County, driving through Lake County, Highway 29, there's just a big brown patch of trees. They don't become green during the summertime or springtime. They just remain brown. So obviously, there's a lot of decay and death happening in our trees throughout. I just want to remind Supervisor Piska that RC, sorry, yeah, RC, RC, don't know when the date is, that their biomass facility will go in, but I think that's definitely something to try and link in and see if we can be one of the people that can provide that type of biomass to them. Because it's not just about the tree mortality, it's what do we do with them? There are even trees that have fallen at one point. There's a lot still left around in our communities. And so, hopefully, that can happen sooner than later. But without the biomass facilities, it just becomes very difficult to, what can be done? There's definitely possibilities, but that one is very helpful.
Yeah, and there is, the biomass project that the Scotts Valley Band of Pomos is looking at repositioning that project, another place in the county, so that it can be used immediately.
Well, thank you for that. Any other insight on that? I should open public input for this, since we brought up another subject about tree mortality. So I'll go ahead and open it up for anyone in the public that wants to speak on tree mortality. All right, not seeing anyone in the chambers or on Zoom. Bring it back to the Board to close this item, and appreciate your report and your presentation, Deputy Director Del Giannis. Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you so much, Board.
All right. Item 6.5, Consideration of Resolution to Authorize the County Administrative Officer to, on behalf of the library, Submit a Grant Application, Acceptance, and Execution of Grant Funds from the State of California Budget Act of 2021 SB 129. And so, I'll give this over to CAO Hutchinson, or actually, Christopher Veach. I see him on. Christopher, the floor is yours.
Hello, thank you. Yes, I'm Christopher Veach, the county librarian. Thank you for entertaining this motion today. I just have a short slideshow to help explain this item. If I can share my screen, I think. Yes, okay. So I'm here before your Board today to adopt the resolution to authorize a grant application to the State Library Building Forward Grant Program. And what this program is for is for critical life and safety infrastructure projects at our library. Applications may be submitted by the county on behalf of the library, which is one of the reasons I'm presenting this to you today. And grant funds are provided from the State Library through the Budget Act of 2021 and are highly competitive. And so, these are state funds, and they do require a dollar-for-dollar match. Applicants may apply for a match reduction based on their local operating income per capita level, which, for us, we are in the bottom 20% of the state, and we can request a 50% reduction. So it's important to note that that reduction can be denied, but we do hope that it would be approved as we're in the bottom 20% of the state for our local operating income per capita level. And so, I wanted to give you some background on our current library branches to help explain the projects that we're doing. So here are all four of our library branches and the dates they were constructed. Lakeport is one of our older branches and was constructed in 1986. Clear Lake, the Redbud Library, was constructed in 1995. Middletown is our newest branch, which was finished in 2013. And Upper Lake is our historic branch and was finished in 1916. So for all these projects that I'm going to talk about, I worked really closely with Lars Ewing, our Public Services Director, to identify these projects at each of our branches. So we will be submitting four applications, one for each branch, but there are items that are in every application. So for all libraries, we're focusing on staff and building safety, as is required by the funding. One of the first items for all branches would be air filtration improvements to help combat wildfire smoke and provide better indoor air quality at our library branches. We also want to apply for a camera security system and locking doors for all staff areas for better building and staff security, and an automated building control system that would enable key systems in the building to be controlled remotely in case of emergency or evacuation. And then, for our three largest branches, Lakeport, Redbud, and Middletown Library, we'll be applying for a solar backup power generation system that would provide power when our PG&E connections are cut or go out. And that would enable the libraries to continue operating safely during power outages. And then specifically at the Middletown Library, we would be, we want to improve the entryway to the library, so it's more wheelchair accessible. Right now, there is a wheelchair accessible button that opens the automated doors to the entire facility, but there isn't one for the library itself. So that's the main focus there. And then, we also want to improve our circulation desk, which is currently isolated from other staff areas. That's the main customer service point, and right now, it requires staff to turn their back to the main library area, and also, they can't move to staff areas easily. And then, at Lakeport, we would be looking at a replacement of the Lakeport Library roof to provide a secure roof for the next 30 years. We'd also be addressing the fire alarm system, fire sprinkler system, and emergency lighting. None of those are what we would hope them to be right now. There is not currently a fire alarm system at the Lakeport Library, and there isn't a fire sprinkler system either to suppress fire or to break out inside the library. Also, we are applying for water and waste system upgrades to make sure those systems keep going for years to come. So altogether, the current project cost estimate that we'd apply for is $1.6 million. The grant-funded portion would be $1.2 million, and the required match would be $412,375. And that match would be most likely needed from the general fund, and I could let Stephen Carter or Carol Hutchinson speak more to that. So what we're asking for the Board to do today is to adopt the resolution to authorize the County Administrative Officer to, on behalf of the library, submit a grant application, acceptance, and execution of grant funds from the State of California Budget Act of 2021. And I'm happy to answer any questions from the Board about this grant application.
Thank you, Mr. Veach. Are there any questions for him? Vice Chair Scott?
No questions. Just thank you, Christopher, for going after these grants. There's a lot of work to do to make sure that we're maintaining our libraries and not taking money from other areas. So thank you for looking and finding these monies. I think we definitely need to be making sure that we're looking outside of Lake County to bring money in to support our infrastructure. So I definitely support this.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I don't know if CAO Hutchinson or Mr. Carter was going to speak on where the funds for the $400-odd thousand would come from. Just wanted to at least listen to that to be able to understand how we would be able to pay for that.
And Mr. Chair, I yield to Mr. Carter. I asked him to be present to address that question.
Good morning, Board. So to answer that question, it would be generally the fund balance available, so what you would consider the carryover. So each year, we have a carryover of unused revenues that go towards like new roofs or other infrastructure projects, what we call the extraordinary requests from a department that is then approved for the now-considered one-time monies. And this would be one of those projects that would utilize that funding. And no, so it would be out of regular general fund, not cannabis or anything like that.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So my question is, have we used all of the PG&E money that we, not PG&E money, but money that we received from the state budget for PSPS purposes, for like generators and things like that?
So the full, there is one remaining, and that's the fiscal year 2019 PSPS from CALOES, and that was $366,000. That is fully allocated to the geogenerator project, which is going to be about $515,000. It has not been fully spent, but it is being spent, and it is supposed to be spent. The full amount is scheduled to be utilized before the end of the grant.
Okay, I figured as much. And then, what about... And then what about in the potential for, I know we have a meeting on the 23rd coming up, is there potential for ARPA funds to be utilized for this? Just for the fact that our library has been such an important setting for COVID-19, for people to access computers, to be able to access information, just kind of curious if that's something that it might be able to fit into and brought to that committee for a conversation?
So I was not prepared to answer that direct question, but yes, I believe it probably should be, and at that time, we can talk as a committee on whether it fits the criteria. That is a very possible other source of revenue instead of general fund.
Other than that, I'm absolutely in favor, and I appreciate the effort to look for these kinds of funds. We have to make sure that our buildings remain safe and strong enough to last much longer than just till next year. So absolutely want to see us rebuilding and making sure our infrastructure for our buildings are safe and sound.
Thank you.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, obviously support this issue too, Christopher. Thank you for bringing this. I know the general conversation on where the funds are going to be coming from, we'll continue to have those, but I know in each of our districts, we do have some cannabis funds that we have. So for District One, obviously with the Middletown Senior Center, and I would say some of those discretionary funds, this would be a perfect project in my area as we go on with discussions. So completely support it, and it's a vital opportunity for folks to mingle and communicate, and we're getting back to that, so in complete favor of getting this grant application in.
All right. Anything else from the board? I'm opening it up with the public input. Is there anybody in the room that would like to do?
Mr. Chair, Stephen has his.
Oh, sorry, Stephen, I didn't see that. Go ahead, Stephen.
Well, if we're going to talk about cannabis funding, I do want to appreciate Moak's comments, but there is actually $1 million specifically set aside for deferred maintenance, which all of this would easily fall under. So appreciate it, Moak, Supervisor Moak, sorry, but that would be the source we would pull it from if we did go down the cannabis route.
Which means you can reserve your discretionary fund for other discretionary projects.
Okay, all right. Putting it out there.
Thanks for noting that. All right, so I will again open it up to public input. It looks like we have someone in the room that wants to come up and speak. Yeah, come up to the microphone, and you'll have three minutes to give your insight on this topic.
Can you reboard? Yes, I do support this issue as well because it's needed for future generations to come. Thank you.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Kitchin Thomas.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other public input? I don't see any in the chambers and in the Zoom room neither, so bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered. Johanna, can you conduct the roll call, please?
All right, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher, very much for your presentation, and good luck with this grant process.
Thank you. There's also a B, I didn't know if we needed to address that as well.
Oh, you know what?
To authorize the county administrative officer to provide a letter to the granting entity verifying the availability of matching funds. That would help make our application more competitive.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I've already drafted that letter with hope that you would authorize me to send it based on this discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, if the grant, once the grant is funded, we would come back to you for the actual appropriation, for your approval of that. But today, we need to send a letter along with the grant application indicating that funds will be available for this when that time comes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to submit, I want to see. It's not moving. To grant.
To authorize the county administrative officer authority to send a letter to the state advising of matching fund availability for this project.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The resolution was already.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just had a quick question before we get to the vote. At maximum, if it's a perfect match, it would be approximately $800,000?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're hoping that it's approved so that we can drop it down to that 400-odd amount of thousands of dollars. Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
So I do have a motion in a second, right? But I didn't get a chance to public input for this item or the letter, so I'm going to open it up for public input on the letter briefly before we move forward with action. And I'm not seeing anybody coming up to the microphone or on Zoom, and so I'll bring you. Oh, there is somebody, I'm sorry. Come back up and provide some insight on this support letter.
Kitchin Thomas, so no insight, just going to support the CIO Hutchinson to go ahead and draft it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. With that, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board with our motion to Ann Second, already intact. And we will, if you can conduct the roll call for me.
All right, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was on the recommended action where it said B, so that's where, I didn't see it on the agenda, but I see it on that, so thank you, we got that. All right, let's see, next we have 6.6. Consideration of Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee's recommendation to allocate $6,500 from the Fish and Game Fund to the Lake County Certified Tourist Ambassador Program for their efforts to promote visiting anglers and local businesses. And B, consideration of Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee's recommendation to allocate $2,000 to support the annual Chamber of Commerce Bass Tournament. With that, we have Greg Guisti for Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee Chair, and we also have Catherine here as well, Vanderwal, from the agricultural. So yeah, we'll turn it over.
Thank you, Chairman. Really nice to see you all again. Supervisor Pyska, nice to meet you finally. Greg Guisti, Chair of the Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. Brief recap, the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee is a standing committee of this board and is in place to accept monies that are generated from citations written by the Department of Fish and Wildlife. So a game warden writes a citation, the courts assign a fine, a portion of that fine comes to this fund. And in order for the county to accept those funds, you need to have a Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee in place. This committee's been, I've been involved with this committee for a long time. I'm not sure when it started, but it's probably been around for 40 years or so. Just a quiet little committee that addresses all aspects of fish and wildlife conservation, protection, and education, as stated in our bylaws that a previous board approved a revised edition of the bylaws in 2012. But that's how we follow our mission. The committee is under the administration of the Ag Commissioner today. I'm really happy to see Catherine sitting here as the first woman Ag Commissioner for Lake County. I think that's a noteworthy mention. We've worked together for years up at the Ag Office. She is the administrator for the budget, which is handled through her office. When she presents her department budget, I'll be with her to support her in presenting the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee budget. The account has roughly about $40,000 in it. Every year, we allocate about $20,000 for projects that might come before the committee. I'm always trying to keep some in reserve for surprises. And each member of the committee, which we are all appointed to two-year terms by each of you, each member is actively out there, you know, seeking projects, getting public involvement, trying to put that money back into the community. And today, I come forward with you with two examples of just two projects that we hope will not only utilize the money in a reasonable way, but also promote fish and wildlife resources, tourism, and business in this county. The first one is, as was read to you, and I have Michelle Carson from the Lake County Certified Tourist Ambassador Program here if you have specific questions about the program. But the program is to, as I understand it, is to promote Lake County in general. Obviously, it's big on promoting businesses in the county, and some of us have been quite vocal in the past couple of years trying to make a better connection between the businesses of the county and angling in Clear Lake. Arguably, Clear Lake is the largest, is the most powerful tourist attractant we have in the county. If we look at the data available, we see the most out-of-town boaters are coming during the spring months and the fall months. That's when the bass and croppy bite is picking up, it's hot during the summer, other type of boaters have other choices, they're not going to drive from Sacramento, maybe to come up here to go water skiing when they have Folsom and Berryassum, places like that closing. But in 2020, Clear Lake was voted the best bass fishing lake in the United States for the decade. That's the kind of power this lake has. That's why this last weekend, when the Chamber of Commerce had its tournament, we had anglers from Arizona, Nevada, Oregon, and throughout California. Clear Lake is a bucket list destination for a serious angler. The tourist, the Certified Tourist Ambassador Program has proposed that what they'd like to do is compose about 20 banners to hang throughout the county, all the cities, all the businesses, that simply say, "Welcome anglers." If you stop and think about it, we don't do a lot to visibly promote the thousands of people that come to this lake to fish. So in addition to the banners, there would be window posters that simply say, "Welcome anglers," just a thank you for coming into our tire shop because you have a flat tire. Thank you for coming to our restaurant and getting dinner or getting lunch. Thank you for spending a few days in our hotels and motels. So it's just an acknowledgement that people are coming to this county and spending a fair amount of money. You can imagine how much money somebody spent just in gasoline coming from San Diego this weekend to spend three, four, or five days pre-fishing here and then fishing the tournament. So they, in the economic profile that I did just before I retired for the University of California, angling easily generates a million dollars of input to the local economy, and the data is pretty poor. I know it's more than that, but even using the most basic data, we generate a lot of money from angling for this lake. So the banners so far, places like the Main Street in Lakeport, Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce, these are places that have already approved, that have agreed to take these banners, Red Bud Launch Park, Middletown, Hidden Valley Lake, Canocti Vista Casino, all the county launch ramps, clearly, and all of the four bait and tackle shops. So about 20 of these banners, large banners, like we see for the rodeo or for the county fair, those kind of banners would be purchased and distributed to businesses to put the welcome sign out for anglers. In addition to, you know, just the banners, double-sided, or excuse me, window posters, and just the paraphernalia to hang on bungee cords and zip ties and things like that, the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program has requested $6,500 from the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Fund. As I said, when Steve Haycheck and I presented the budget a year ago, we allocated $20,000. It's plenty of money in there for this project, and the advisory committee unanimously voted to bring this to you and ask your support for this funding.
Thank you for that. Anything else to add?
I was going to address the other one secondly, I thought.
I just have a question, is this a one-time request? So it's not an annual?
No, no, this would be a one-time to purchase these banners and to print up the banners, to print up the posters, distribute them, and this would be a one-time request.
Ms. Grant, do we take these, should we take these up separately, or can we do both at the same time? I don't think she heard me. Oh, yes, she did.
I think in looking at the language, it'd be advisable to take them up separately, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll take up the first one first that you just explained. Is there any other comments from the board? Vice Chair Scott?
Just that I support this. I'm actually a Certified Tourism Ambassador, and they are doing an amazing job promoting Lake County, getting the word out, educating our public on how to approach the anglers when they come into the community, staying positive. So just the great work that they've done, so I support this.
It's a great program, it really does. Pretty proud of them.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I do have a concern for this, is that banners don't have a long longevity. That's my only concern. I love the idea, I love the reason, but to me, a banner a year, two years from now, it's definitely gone. I'd love to see more of a permanent type of situation. I know that in Red Bud Park, I worked to put up a mural. It's a beautiful mural, and they're all coming right through that entry point in order to get their boats into the parking lot. So I'd love to see how this works, and maybe because there is so many funds left over in the budget, to kind of look at a more permanent solution. Because again, the banners, I've seen people put up banners, they're beautiful at first, but then once we get a lot of wind, especially when you're up on the lake like that, where it's all flat coming into the area, that it does eventually rip them up, and eventually they'll be gone, and then there'll be a request for replacement. So I don't mind the option being offered here today, just because I think it's a good idea, but I'd love to see what eventually that cost would look like to have something more permanent fixed so that we don't have to keep having the reoccurring cost. So today, good, but?
Yeah, great idea, yes, totally concur. Admittedly, this is a first step, and just trying to get this ball rolling. But I really like your idea, and I'll take that back to the committee when we meet. We meet six times a year, every two months. We alternate between South County and up here in Lakeport, but that's a great idea, Supervisor, thank you. I will take that message back.
Anything else from the board? Any public input on this in the chambers? And I don't see any online and Zoom, so I'll bring you back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the allocation of $6,500 from the Fish and Game Fund to the Lake County Certified Tourist Ambassador Program for their efforts to promote visiting anglers and local businesses.
Second.
The motion in a second, please conduct the roll call, Johanna.
All right, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to the second, towards the allocation for the $2,000 to support the annual Chamber of Commerce Bass Tournament, the only local sponsored event.
Thank you, Supervisor. Yeah, the committee, this was not a request that came from the chamber, this is a committee, this is a recommendation that came from the members of the committee, that this is, this was a 34th annual Lake County-sponsored bass tournament. It started off as the Record B tournament, 34, yeah, Record B tournament 34 years ago, then the Brunos took it over, then Holder Ford had it for a couple of years, and this is, I think, the third year that the Chamber of Commerce has taken it over. And again, it is a, it's a very affordable tournament, it brings people into the county from all over the western United States. There's 114 boats this last two days on the lake in this tournament. It's a lot of fun, it's, people enjoy it, people look forward to it, and we thought this money, again, with our bylaws saying to promote, educate, conserve fish and wildlife resources, we thought that this is one of those Lake County events that this money, it would be appropriate to spend $2,000 from this account to continue supporting this event. It really is something that people look forward to, and that's that.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I'm curious, it doesn't specify, what do you mean by the only locally sponsored fishing tournament?
Bass tournament. Most of the other tournaments, there's 100 tournaments on average a year on Clear Lake. Most of them are club tournaments, or best bass tournament, or...
FLW?
FLW, yeah, you know, the big guys. And so this particular tournament is, other than the Clear Lake Oaks Catfish Tournament, which brings in as many as 300 people a year, this is the one bass tournament that's really Lake County's, where all of the other ones are put on by private individual clubs or businesses in some cases, like FLW. And so, you know, their entry fees are usually much higher. They do bring in a lot of people from all over the western United States to fish Lake County, but this little tournament is ours, if you will. fish Lake County, but this little tournament is ours, if you will. And we, we just want to make sure that we demonstrate our support by giving some, some financial support to this and also to make sure that, you know, they've got some money to keep it going into the future.
And the reason I ask, and I appreciate the definition, I know that when we provided the same support, I don't know if it was two years ago-
Last, last year.
Was it last year?
Mm-hmm.
That there was a comment that this was not an annual request, at least that came from the board chamber or the CEO of the chamber, who's no longer here with us at this moment. She moved away. And you brought up exactly the thought that was in my mind was the Clear Lake Oaks Catfish Derby, which is definitely a homegrown type of tournament. And I would love to see this money be spread rather than continuously used for the same purpose. I think that there's finite amount of money there, and I'd love to see that support make sure that it hits as many different groups. And since this came specifically from the board or the committee rather than a request, I would love to see the board think of other identified tournaments that are occurring that are homegrown and supporting those things. And then when we go around full circle, coming back again and seeing if we can support the chamber. That's my position on this, this one today.
Absolutely. The, the challenge we have is that we, we cannot give money to an individual. Several years ago, we had a, we had an individual come to us that wanted to write a book on, on the birds of Clear Lake. It was a great idea, but we couldn't allocate the money to, to a particular individual. And that, that individual, we suggested that he go through the Red Bud Audubon Society and we make it one of their publications, and then that would clear the way to allocate this money. The individual chose not to do that. So with the, the Clear Lake Oaks Catfish Tournament, if it wasn't an individual but some organization that came, I can't imagine that the committee would not support trying to provide financial support for that too. Because that, that is a big deal, right? And it's just a matter of how we, how we channel the money to an appropriate entity to, to support these kinds of efforts.
And I guess I must have been uninformed. I thought it was the Business Association in Clear Lake Oaks that was-
If it is, they would, they please-
It is the Clear Lake Oaks Business, Len Haven Business, KLOBA.
Well, then please ask them to contact Catherine, and if they, if they want support, I'll work with them like I worked with the CTA program to, because we get a lot of good ideas that come before the advisory committee, but what we need are projects. We need deliverables. And what they did here is they gave us a really good deliverable, as I just presented to you. And again, you know, so if it's a business association, that would be-
I'll have them reach out to you.
That would be perfect. And I would suggest to go through Catherine because she knows how to get hold of me easiest.
All right.
Yeah, I just had a follow-up question. I, I do remember asking Ms. Fulton last year if this was going to be an annual contribution. So has it been before last year or is-
No, last year was an official request from the, from the chamber CEO. This year, at our last meeting, knowing that, you know, we, that the tournament is successful, we just felt as a committee unanimously that it's a good expenditure of these funds to support this local program.
So, and, you know, I, I think it's great. I think making sure that it's spread around the county is probably a good idea. Is the committee doing any work to encourage, like, anything drought-related with our visitors? You know, save water or anything with quagga mussels? Because I think that would also fall under the purview of the work. Is that correct?
Right. This committee has supported the Lake County Department of Water Resources a great deal over the years for stormwater protection, quagga mussel protection or interception. We've support, yes. And we've also supported Department of Fish and Wildlife Wardens and their poaching programs. Again, you know, we're always trying to get folks to come to us with ideas. And, and county water resources has been a beneficiary of several thousand dollars over the years for the things that you just mentioned. Absolutely.
But I was just wondering if you were pushing that message out to the visitors that are coming through any of these-
Well, I think, you know, as volunteers individually, we're always talking about it. We engage, we engage people. You know, me personally, yes, I've, I've done some things. But in a broad sense, I'd say yes, but to give you specifics other than what I just shared with you, we're not out there campaigning. I wouldn't say that. But on an individual basis, I think, you know, the committee is, most of the members have been on it for a long time, and we take it seriously, and we promote it when we can.
Great.
Yeah. Good question. Thanks. Think about that.
Vice Chair Scott?
More of a comment. For myself, you know, we're always looking for the public to come and sit on our committees. And we have this committee that's coming to us with a recommendation. You said it was unanimous, that this is how they felt that this committee should be spending their money. And for me, that's good enough. This committee has done their research, and I think we need to be supporting our committees that we're, we're putting in place to help advise us.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to encourage a Pike Minnow turn, fishing tournament in Lake Pillsbury, but that's a joke.
I'll talk to you about it.
We'll talk offline.
I have no problem talking about that.
We'll talk offline. I was only kidding because they're just so invasive, you know.
There's, there's some merit to that.
Well, let's talk more about that. Maybe I'll come to a meeting and we'll-
We can kick it around.
Anyhow, I'll open it up for public comment if there's anyone in the room that wants to discuss this or has a comment. No, I'm not seeing anyone. We'll go on to the Zoom room, and I'm not seeing anyone there as well, so we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the recommendation from the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee to allocate $2,000 to support the annual Chamber of Commerce Bass Tournament.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Johanna, conduct the roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you, Greg, and thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
All right. We're at 12:00. And it's like we have, I just want to ask briefly-
Mr. Chair, I could give you a few updates if it would be helpful?
Yes, it would.
So, of course, Matthew is ready anytime you wanted to take up 7.3. Director Ewing is in the Zoom and available to take up 7.5 anytime you wish. And 7.4, the Behavioral Health Director has requested to pull that item. The, the issue pertained to an RFP, a Request for Proposals, and he advises that a Request for Proposals for that item was issued yesterday. So, so he requests to pull that.
Okay. And so it looks like we have basically those two non-timed items and the 5.9 to conduct-
And, oh, excuse me, I had an update on that too. 5.9, the sheriff requests to just resolve that issue within his own authority. It is within the signature authority of the sheriff as the department head for his office.
So that's pulled, like-
It's pulled and does not need to return.
Okay. So Supervisor Sabatier, you had your hand up.
I was just going to provide the same update.
Okay. So it looks like we have two more items. And so with that, I think we could push through and then go from there. 7.3, Consider, Consideration of Agreement Between the County of Lake and Nicole Anderson and Associates LLC for Facilitation of Community Visioning Forum Promoting Tolerance, Respect, Equity, and Inclusion in Lake County. And with that, I will hand it over to CEO Hutchinson.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Matthew Rothstein has just done an outstanding job of supporting the Community Vision Forum Planning Group that has gone through the process of securing bids for facilitators to assist with the next steps of this diversity, equity, and inclusion movement. And I want to introduce him and let him present this agenda item to you. Thank you, Matthew, for all your work.
Thank you, Carolyn. Good afternoon, board members. This is Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. As you will recall, on Tuesday, February 23, 2021, residents from Lake County's richly diverse communities watched as your board unanimously proclaimed promoting tolerance, respect, equity, and inclusion among your most, among your highest priorities. Your board's proclamation at that time was a logical next step flowing from a grassroots community effort that began in June 2020, inspired by a Kelseyville area faith leader, Chlovis Lewis, and a self-organized group called Community Call to Action. And it was also a powerful statement. No more could we allow immutable characteristics like the color of one's skin or their cultural background to predict success and failure. No more could we allow unconscious biases to affect our behavior in ways that cause real harm. We had a responsibility to grapple with what could be done locally and act. In the time since, community members and leaders from the County of Lake, cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake, and tribal governments that resonated with your board's proclamation and volunteered to be a part of this effort, serving as Carol referenced on the county, countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee. And we're very grateful that Chairman Crandall and Supervisor Scott have been really, truly invaluable contributors and leaders in that group as well. The committee echoed your board's sense that we need to hear from the public, hear the experiences of Lake County residents. And the committee also found that a professional facilitator, someone with deep experience guiding diversity, equity, and inclusion-focused discussions would enhance Lake County's efforts. Following a rigorous consultant selection process, we present for your consideration today an agreement with Nicole Anderson and Associates Consulting LLC for facilitation of three public community visioning forums and other meetings intended to gather stakeholder input and further develop local leaders. Recommendations for next steps of your board and our city councils will also emerge from that process. If your board approves the agreement today, we are hiring a dynamic and expert partner. And Ms. Anderson will work with us in the coming weeks to further define specific plans, and that work is expected to begin in earnest this Thursday afternoon, March 17. Happily, Ms. Anderson already has some familiarity with Lake County, having recently facilitated leadership training for county management staff. The total agreement cost before you today is $33,000, which, as a note, is a fraction of the cost of the other proposal we received while still promising a very high standard of quality. And the agreement is between the county and Nicole Anderson and Associates. As noted in our memo to your board, we've also invited our city partners to share in the cost, using a population-based model. And members of the committee from both jurisdictions have voiced their conceptual support as early as June of 2021. On March 3, the Lakeport City Council committed to participating in the cost sharing agreement, and Clear Lake will further consider the cost share this Thursday evening at their meeting. We're deeply grateful to our city and tribal government partners, to Angela Koyar Marakine of the Lake County Office of Education, and the many others, committee members and concerned residents alike that have contributed to this process thus far. And staff recommends that your board adopt the agreement before you today. We are truly excited by the prospect of Ms. Anderson joining the team that is seeking to promote an even more just and inclusive Lake County. And at this point, I'll yield to Supervisors Scott and Crandall if you have anything further to add.
Vice Chair Scott?
I just want to thank this board for allowing me to sit on this committee. It's been absolutely amazing working with this group to really further develop what we want the promoting of tolerance, respect, equity, and inclusion to look like here in Lake County. And stated in the memo, but I'm going to read it, are some of the things that we felt were important in moving forward and having Nicole Anderson help us develop what this is going to look like in the community. So it's, it's just really exciting conversations that we've been having. But some of the things that we came up with as a committee, and this wasn't done fast-paced. This was done with a lot of thought and action, and it took a couple, couple meetings to really define what this list is going to look like. So there was really a lot of thought. But the things that we felt that were important to be looking at to, you know, make Lake County a better place for all of us is meaningful actions and activities that will build bridges where there may be walls, fostering tolerance, respect, understanding, equality, and inclusion, promotion of nonviolence and nonviolent conflict resolution, and focusing resources on underlying causes and conditions that lead to inequitable resources and injustice distribution. So these are the things that we hope to tackle. They're very large agenda items, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what Nicole Anderson comes up with to, to help us direct the county and our community in this direction.
Yes, thank you for that. Now, I'd like to also just highlight that, that working with Nicole, she has also worked with some of our staff already as well and, and has done a great job. For me, when I attended, it really opened my eyes to blind spots that I had. It's very important that we all are able to recognize those and in any capacity when it comes to dealing with other humans, you know. So I, I fully support this. I enjoy being a part of this so that we can all come together and, you know, resolve issues and also break down the barriers. So when it comes to many of the different challenges we have, when it comes to this type of, you know, this type of situation, when it comes to, you know, for the community and equity and inclusion. So is there any other comments?
Just thankful for bringing up those blind spots because I think sometimes we don't even realize we have them. And that was one of the discussion points is understanding where our blind spots are and that, that we do have them. And how do we overcome those?
Right.
Making sure that we're respecting everybody. So it's been a lot of just inner searching and figuring out ourselves to make the community better. So thank you for bringing that point up.
Right. Because people really look at things from a perspective of an opinion, and they don't really look at where it's, you know. And so once you're able to look at some of the things that I miss out on, you know, I realize, wow, they may be missing too, so I need to hear them a little more or whatever the case may be. So, yeah, just wanted to, I'm glad that you mentioned that as well. So, yeah, any, any comments, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, and I appreciate the momentum and progress that the committee has made and what's expected to come in the future. From what I understand, it's a very open public forum that will be offered. And one of the thoughts in my mind when the committee was created was also to provide some feedback to us as a county agency, how we can do better in our hiring practices and what we're showing off on our website. And I'm hopeful that that can get there because again, I'm, I'm looking at our HR page right now, and I just feel like I took 10, 20 years, stepped back versus what is the new language? What is the new standard? And I'm hoping that we can get some of those suggestions coming back to us. And I don't know if that's a part of that. And, and we're waiting for the public forum to get to that part, but that's what I'm looking for as well. And just wanted to kind of make sure that that was still a part of that or if that needs to be a separate conversation. But it looks like from the yes that I'm getting from Supervisor Scott that it is.
It's definitely a part of that. We need to be looking at how we practice and our, our policies to be able to change our communities. Most definitely, that is part of that. And that may look different from how the county is to the two cities. So we may come up with a plan, and the county may look different than what the city adopts. It's all about the population that we're serving. So there's that too. It's going to look different.
And my question for the committee also has been, have you looked at demographics of staff versus population demographics? Because I know I have, and it's, it's a little jarring, to say the least, in order to reach a point where, okay, what is it that we need to do to at least make sure that our candidate pool looks more diverse, that, that our employment pool looks more diverse? Because it really starts with the hiring process, in my opinion.
We haven't dove into that-
Okay.
-yet far, but it definitely needs to be something we look at.
Supervisor Pisca?
I appreciate this work so much. It, it's innovative and it moves us forward. And I got a question last night. Is this, you know, that's a lot of money. Is this a response to this particular problem or that particular problem? And it's not. It's about moving us forward collectively, considerably, respectfully, and how we can grow rather than a response to one specific problem that we face. So I just wanted to share that, and I'm so appreciative of all the work that you're doing and bringing this board for our community.
Thank you. And I think too, just to, just to highlight what, what's been discussed here is getting those type of, this discussion before us so that that way, when we think of the policies like you're talking about with human resources, we, we can make adjustments so that it actually puts forward new verbiage and new language that promotes what, what is more equitable and brings us closer to this time and generation that we're in. Because that's just very important for us to move forward in that aspect. And this board is a testament to that, so. And staff is testament to that. So I think that's the whole point and the-
I, I just want to add that I've, I've said the specific acronym HR, and I know it's been repeated. This is not to say that- repeated. This is not to say that HR is doing anything wrong. It's our website sometimes doesn't always update with the same. Our processes take a little bit longer to be updated with the same. I think that HR is doing the work that needs to be done. There's some other things that are more difficult to get to. For example, we know what some of our issues are today, but getting to a point where we have an ordinance that fixes it doesn't always happen immediately, because there's a process in order to get those things completed and brought to us. So that's why I'm looking for those types of things, to help HR with the things that take a little bit longer to improve on.
First Chair Scott?
And I might be way overstepping here, but I would love it as a leader of Clear Lake, because you represent that community, if you could go to their meeting and speak on this. Because I know that they were a little concerned about joining us, concerned that they would have to follow the same policies as the county. But just know that their entity would be just a part of this discussion, how we're going to move forward.
And so I did take part in their meeting last time, and it was more a concern of, is there, it felt to them that there was more to come? Was there going to be any more requests where they would have to pay in order to be involved in this? What's, they wanted to better understand the long-term commitment to this versus just what was in front of them. And there was not, at least Mayor Sluton, who is on the board with you guys, on the Diversity Committee, was not able to respond to that. And so they were waiting for a little bit more information. I know that Matthew Rothstein was also there. I believe that was the core of the issue, was is this part of a future request of expenses on this, or is this it? I believe there was some lines that kind of alluded to that there would be more, rather than that this would cover the entirety of it. And so they just were looking for more information.
Well, I think this is definitely going to be a larger project, and I know that's been a discussion in the committee meeting, of when is this committee done? Is our process done now? We've been tasked with something from the Board of Supervisors to come up with our community visioning. What's that going to look like? And I definitely see this as being a standing committee to continue looking at the issues that we have in our community. We have, for too long, just let things go, and we need to have a body that's that aware of what's going on. So I see this as something continuously moving forward in our community.
And I would suggest, at this moment in time, it's just an ad hoc committee. I would definitely suggest when you feel, sooner than later, when you feel that that's something that we need to bring back in order to turn it into a standing committee, that that would be the appropriate thing to do.
And that's, I think, we're hoping that this consultant's going to bring out and really flesh out what that's supposed to look like. Because this is, like you said, just...
It's a visioning forum, so that's what we're getting to eventually.
What we want this committee to look like in the future. But most definitely, this will be coming back. My hopes is.
All right. Well, I'll open up the public input. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to speak on this item on the agenda? And looking on Zoom, I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between County of Lake and Nicole Anderson and Associates LLC for the, I can't say that word, for the Community Vision Forum Promoting Tolerance, Respect, Equality, and Inclusion in Lake County. Do I need to do a dollar amount?
A dollar amount, would that...
Or is my motion good? My motion's good. Okay.
Matthew, will you state the dollar amount?
Not to exceed $33,000?
Yes. Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Johanna, conduct the roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matthew, very much for your help on this and your work on this ad hoc committee. All right. Item 7.5, Consideration of the Plans and Specifications for the Lake County Courthouse Roof Replacement Project. Bid number 22-10, and authorize the Public Services Director and Assistant Purchasing Agent to advertise for bids. And it looks like we have Lars. Lars, this is your item. Give the floor to you.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, supervisors. Excuse me. First off, I'm sorry I am not there in person. I would have liked to have seen Greg Juisty. Not that I wouldn't have liked to have seen you all, but it's been a while since I saw Greg. But to this point, the roof replacement project for the courthouse has been on the books for a couple of years. There are some complexities associated with it, primarily surrounding the telecommunications carriers, three of them on the courthouse roof. They had to do some upgrades to prepare their facilities for the roof replacement project. That's primarily T-Mobile and Verizon, who had to do some very significant upgrades. AT&amp;T happened to be ahead of the game a bit. That also discounts other facilities that are up there that are county or state through the courts, their facilities. But we are to the point now where we have the plans and specifications ready, and we are prepared to go to bid. This process, what the board sees for projects that go to bid are projects that are called formal projects that exceed a certain threshold. At this point, it's over $200,000 for a public project. Most commonly, the approval of the plans and specifications are done on consent. But as I understand it, there was a request to have it here, and just potentially to bring attention to it. But what the board, what I'm asking of the board is to approve the plans and specifications, so we can put the project out to bid. I'm happy to answer any questions from here.
Thank you, Lars. Are there any questions from the board?
Needs to be done.
Not seeing any. If there's anyone in public that has...
Can you tell me first?
Go ahead. If you want to come up to the microphone, please state your name for the record and...
Joan Moss, I want to make sure that the county uses fans when they replace the roof. There have been accidents in the past where people got exposed to the smell of tar that have not yet been resolved. So I just want to make sure that the workers in the courthouse are safe from the smell, or else maybe you can declare a day off. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Spatier?
I appreciate the fact that the specifications and plans were available to go through at the administrative office. I believe, from what I looked at, work is only being done after 4:00 PM. Correct me if I'm wrong, Director Ewing. I know that, and I'll just continue on my comment real quick. I know that there's a lot of complications with all the stuff that is on the roof and to repair. I know that it says that they will work with all the contractors, including our IT team, in order to deal with the antennas and all the other infrastructure that's up there. I think that will definitely be part of the difficulty of the job. But I trust that it will all go smoothly with cooperation with all departments involved. But it's definitely a difficult task, a necessary task. But it seems to me with work starting at 4:00 PM, that that would negate the potential nuisance that Ms. Moss just brought up.
Well, if I could follow up on that, that is correct. We are limiting the contractor to work after 4:00 PM on the weekdays, and work to occur on the weekends. I wouldn't go as far as to say it negates it, but it certainly mitigates it, along with other processes that we will be requiring of the contractor. We have the ability to shut down the vents, for example. We can, you know, prevent air, the air intake from coming in up on the roof. And certainly, you know, not every roofing project is the same. Some projects have certain solutions, certain compounds that are put down, others do not. So this one has, in comparison to others, has a, it's very, relatively straightforward, to be honest, as far as a roofing project, the complexities are associated with the number of facilities on the roof.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm not seeing anyone else in the chambers with their hand up for a public comment, and not seeing anyone in the Zoom room, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the plans and specifications for the Lake County Courthouse Roof Replacement Project. Bid number 22-10, and authorize the Public Services Director or Assistant Purchasing Agent to, wait a second, to advertise for bids.
Second.
Yeah, there we go.
I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So it looks like we've covered all of our items on the agenda, except for closed session. And it's looking like it's around 12, almost 12:30, so I'm thinking we'll take a lunch break and come back after lunch. And do you...
Is that your preference, or do you like to keep going?
How does the board feel about that?
What's our timeline look like for closed?
Take a five-minute break. Yeah, what's the timeline?
I would need 15 minutes to clear the room, and then probably an hour of hold for...
Yeah, I'd say keep pushing.
Okay, it looks like we, it looks like that's what we want to do.
I'll even another airhead.
Well, so what we'll do is we'll go into, we'll go straight into closed section, closed session. And I'll read those off right now. 8.1, 22-12, Public Employee Evaluation, Agricultural Commissioner. 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, Behavioral Health Director. 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Present to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Nichols, Rivers, County of Lake, et al. And with that, we'll go into closed session.